No, let me turn you.
Oh, you didn't turn me on.
There you are. The light, it's...
Only the lights on the side.
Oh, I'm looking down here and it's like, oh my gosh. Okay, now I have control. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of November 7th, 2023. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez is absent. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo is absent. Councilmember Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. First item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak at this time?
We do not have any requests to speak at this time.
The City Council will now recess to a closed session and will reconvene to the regular meeting portion of the agenda at 5:30 PM. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the closed session items.
We have four closed session items tonight. 3A is for a conference with legal counsel pursuant to California Government Code Section Item 3B is a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9, Paragraph 1 of Subdivision D. Item 3C is a public recruitment, public employment recruitment for city manager pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957B1. And item 3D is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section
We will now convene to closed session. Before I call this meeting to order, I would like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Mr. Bravo. Mr. Bravo, would you mind raising your hand? It's in the back. Please ask him for a listening device if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. El interprete de esta tarde es el señor Bravo, sentado atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of November 7th, 2023. Madam Clerk, could you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council Meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link at the top of the agenda. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a phone, please press star nine on your telephone keypad and then press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the mayor. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez is absent. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. Assistant City Attorney Ms. Whittem, would you please like to give the closed session report?
Just thank you, Madam Mayor. In closed session this evening, we had item 3A at conference with legal counsel. On that matter, staff provided an update to the City Council. Item 3B, conference with legal counsel regarding an existing case, Aquas forming foams products liability. In that matter, the City Council voted unanimously to direct the interim city manager or his designee to opt out of the proposed settlement, to opt out of the class. Item 3C, public employee recruitment. The council provided direction to its recruiting firm. Item 3D, conference with labor negotiator. The city's labor negotiators provided information to the City Council.
Thank you. I'd like to move up the retirement resolution item and Councilmember Cordero will be making that presentation.
My, hello, there you go. I thought it was sick. You know, it's very appropriate that I get to read this because I worked with Mike Davis for many years and when computers first came into being with us, he helped me through that and by golly, he's kind of sort of still helping me through that. So this is a resolution for the City Council for the City of Santa Maria. And whereas Mike Davis has been a valuable member of the city team since 1989, and whereas with 34 years of service, Mike served a lead role in several noteworthy projects and was known for his effort and ambition. And whereas during his tenure, Mike started the city's first website, had the city's first email address, and his knowledge and careful attention to detail assisted in several upgrades to the city's telephone system. And whereas Mike helped the information technology, known now widely as IT, the team built the city's communication structure for all 10 departments and played a significant role in the rollout of Windows 7 and Office 13. And in 2015, with the city's launch of its own ShoreTel phone system, and whereas, a major accomplishment, he assisted with the multimillion-dollar computer-aided dispatch center and records management system, RMS. The hardware and software installation in 2019 at the police department. Whereas Mr. Davis retired on October 6, 2023, and the Santa Maria City Council wishes to recognize Mike for his lasting contributions to the community. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria as follows. Mike Davis is hereby recognized and commended for his 34 years of exemplary service to the residents and businesses of Santa Maria, and we wish him well in all his future endeavors. Passed and adopted this regular meeting for the City of Santa Maria City Council in California on the 7th day of November, 2023, signed by all of us. And here to receive this is Mr. Davis himself.
I just wanted to say thank you very much. I really appreciate this. It's been a wonderful 34 years. We've, when we started, or when I started, we didn't really have computers. We put in the first computers many years ago, and it's been a pleasure of working with all the city employees. Everybody really is dedicated and we've gotten so many projects and accomplishments completed over the years and it's been a pleasure. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
And thank you very much, Mike. Not only have you given 34 years to the city, but I didn't realize you were involved in so many things, and I especially didn't know that you're a commodore of the San Luis Yacht Club. So, very, very interesting. Thank you very much. And I want to thank you personally for all the help you've given me because you know I am not really very technically savvy, I guess, but thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could have a second?
I was, where is that coming from? Yes. Okay.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. So I want to thank Mike for his service. We've been together a long time for all his 34 years here with the city and, you know, we've been through computer setups, computer breakdowns, telephone breakdowns, and the radio system. Mike has always been a pleasure to work with. He's always been helpful, willing to go that extra yard to get things done. I'm happy to see him retire before me, which is kind of bizarre, but again, he's just a great person. As you mentioned, he's involved in the community. He does a number of things out there and we wish him well and good health. So congratulations.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, we had someone on the phone?
We do. We have Chief IT Officer Jeff Mauricek on the line. I'm going to ask him to unmute. Jeff, are you there?
Yes, I don't think you're there.
Yes, we can hear you.
Terrific. Mayor Patino and members of the council, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person to recognize Mike's retirement, but I would like to say a few words if I might. I'd like to express my appreciation for Mike's contributions to the city. Over his 34-year career, Mike has led tremendous change in the city. He was a key driver in ushering in computer technology to all city departments. While 34 years is a long time in people years, it's an eternity in technology years. When Mike started his career, there was not a computer on everyone's desk. Basic cell phones were just emerging, and video conferencing was still just a good idea. The city did not have a website or even an email system for that matter. Today, city staff can perform their jobs from almost anywhere at any time. Mike's dedication to the city is demonstrated in his willingness and ability to learn and adapt to the rapidly evolving technology environment. Most recently, Mike was instrumental in implementing a modern regional radio system, a new computer-aided dispatch system, and a state-of-the-art 911 emergency call system. Because of Mike, Santa Maria is a safer place for emergency responders and residents alike. We will all miss Mike's determination, contributions, expertise, and most of all, his companionship. Mike, I'm sorry that I can't be there tonight in person, but best of luck to you in your retirement. You certainly have earned it. That concludes my comments.
Okay. Am I not, am I not doing something right here? Am I okay? Okay. Okay, thank you. Any, okay, I didn't know if anyone wanted to make a comment. So, thank you very much. We appreciate this. Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title?
The City Council will receive and file the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Commission, Visitors Bureau, and Tourism Marketing District 2022-2023 Annual Report.
Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Maybe before Mike leaves, we should ask him if we should do this update that the TV wants to do. Probably not. Good evening. It is a pleasure to be with you this evening. Once a year, around this time in the fall, we take an opportunity to come and share with you the results of the work that we have been doing in our economic development and tourism marketing efforts on behalf of the city and the community. And it's always a pleasure to have that opportunity to just kind of report back and share some of the things that maybe get missed in the day-to-day, you know, noise of our business. So, we're going to start by playing just a quick little video that gives a little of a synopsis, and then Suzanne Singh, our Economic Development Lead, will go through the economic development portion of the program, and then Jennifer Harrison, who is our lead on tourism marketing, will take the agenda at that point. So, we'll play the video first.
The Santa Maria Valley Chamber is a catalyst, a convener, and a champion for a stronger Santa Maria Valley. Our organization represents over 25,000 individuals with a membership growth of 118 this past year. As a catalyst for business growth, we assist new businesses and those looking to expand. This past year, the Chamber and Economic Development Commission have assisted over 230 businesses, conducted over 200 business site visits, and helped bring over 20 new businesses to the Santa Maria Valley.
The Chamber continues to promote existing businesses and showcase the Santa Maria Valley as a great place to work, live, visit, and do business. Our partnership with the Santa Maria Times on our local business spotlight series has allowed us to share the unique stories of various great local businesses.
Our monthly featured business program done in partnership with the City of Santa Maria is another great way we like to recognize the businesses in our community.
Our visitors bureau continues to promote our community to those outside the area. This past year, we gave out 7,000 hotel referrals, had over 770 wine trolley riders, and had 369,000 impressions to our tourism website, santamariavalley.com.
The creation of our Hispanic Business Group has allowed us to connect with our Hispanic Business Community. The group has 40 active members and has held two events this year with a total of 140 attendees.
Convenience leaders and influencers allows us to effectively advocate for businesses and help solve problems both in our community and throughout our region.
We continue to support a positive future for our local community by identifying and building the future generation of leaders. Our Junior CEO Program helps the next generation of business leaders.
This year, we had 113 participants in the program with 30 continuing their business after completion of the program.
Through our Business and Government Roundtable, our Tourism Marketing District, Ambassador Committee, and Economic Development Commission, we continue to connect, advocate, and serve other areas of our community.
The Chamber continues to work with our community partners on addressing the lack of childcare and its impact on our workforce. Additionally, we are helping build a strong future workforce through programs like our teacher tours that connect our local educators to local businesses in the Santa Maria Valley. The Chamber is thankful for our workforce partners, including Allen Hancock College, the Santa Barbara County Education Office, and the Career Technical Education Program.
The Chamber continues to provide multiple networking opportunities and events to educate our community and facilitate conversations. This past year, we held over 15 networking opportunities for our community members and over 2,250 local professionals participated in our event.
Our many community partners help with the Chamber tackle the major issues facing our community and the entire Central Coast. The Chamber is thankful for our strong partnerships with Reach, the Tri-County Chamber Alliance, and other state and national organizations, including Cal Chamber and the Western Association of Chamber Executives. This year, the Chamber is also pleased to have become a partner with the California State Hispanic Chamber. As a champion for a stronger Santa Maria Valley, the Chamber is taking on the major issues facing our community, including housing, childcare, and workforce development. We work closely with the city and local developers to help bring more housing to our community, and this year again, we hosted a housing summit to discuss the issues around the lack of affordable housing. On behalf of the Chamber, Visitors Bureau, and Economic Development Commission, we thank our investors, members, volunteers, and partners for helping us to be a catalyst, convener, and champion for the Santa Maria Valley. We look forward to continuing to be a strong advocate for the growth of our community.
Some of those folks couldn't make it here tonight, so we thought we'd bring them in this way. So, that gives you just a quick overview, and now I'm going to have Suzanne come up and spend a few minutes with some of the details around economic development.
Thank you, Glenn. Good evening, Mayor Patino and members of the City Council. It's always a pleasure to come here and report to you about our accomplished work we've done in the past fiscal year. Let's see. There we go. As we monitor important factors in our community, it's important to note several things, and so I'm going to go through them really quickly. Unemployment is down to 4.5%, and our labor workforce is over 48,000 people in this area that can work. Our median home prices fall around 579,000 per home, and we sold about 853 homes in the last fiscal year. That's down about 143 homes from the previous year. Construction of our non-residential was a total of 12 projects with an additional 352 alteration projects. Tolling permits were 2,391 for that fiscal year with a valuation of over $37 million. We had 793 new business licenses that were issued, and our renewal was over 4,800 for business licenses. Vacancy rates were around 2% for retail, industrial, and the warehouse, while office vacancy is over 11% currently. Sales tax collected was over $58 million. That's 532.41 sales tax per capita with 109,000 residents in the community. So we assisted 236 businesses in a variety of issues and offering support for them. We touched over 200 businesses with outreach and site visits. We received over 20 potential business leads, and we were sent six of the GoBiz RFI's that come out occasionally. We also had nine business expansion projects and 19 housing projects that were in the pipeline. Our Hispanic business outreach has been extremely successful. It's taken off, and we usually see between 40 and 80 folks at our events that we're doing. Currently, we host two large mixers, and we're doing a monthly Grow Your Business series, which is where these folks can come and learn a little bit about the community or about a topic they're interested in, and then we spotlight a featured business, and then they network and get to know each other better. Let's see. We continue to promote our local businesses. It's not moving. I don't know why. Did it run out of battery? Oh, there we go. Okay. We continue to promote our local businesses by providing our featured business program, which is in partnership with the city, and we present at the City Council meetings. Also, we have a monthly business spotlight video series that we do. We continue to work with our partners to improve the quality of life, the business environment, and bring a positive impact to the community. We've worked with Allen Hancock College to start up a startup business-type course that we had done for the last fiscal year, and they've turned around and asked us to increase that, so we've added five courses to this business series, and then we'll have a resource mixer at the end. So the topics of these courses are a startup business overview class, business planning with permitting and fees, finance, taxes, and access to capital, an HR and legal course, health department and code enforcement, and then of course, that final resource mixer will bring in all those previous speakers, and then we will bring in the resources, like the SBA and EDC and those type of organizations to further support the business community. We're part of the air service team for the airport, so we participate in airline headquarters meetings, and we're dealing with trying to attract airlines to our airport. We also facilitate attraction of businesses to the airport's industrial real estate, and we work with them on their specific plan update. We continue to find ways to strengthen our community by focusing on workforce development through our programs such as Leadership Santa Maria Valley, our Junior CEO Program, which is really a delight to be part of. This fiscal year, we saw 113 students. 30 of those businesses actually came and opened their business on launch day. It's a complete joy to watch these young students create business and have sales. It really gets them excited, and we're able to assist them further with carrying on their business after this, and we've done that for about three to five businesses. So these are like sixth graders that are starting a business. It's just amazing. It's very exciting to see. And then we also do our teacher tours, which is a new program, and I don't, I don't know if we did that in the previous year, but I'll just touch on it a bit. We actually organize and facilitate our teachers to participate in tours, which means we take them out to the business community. They're able to talk to those CEOs or owners, figure out what's being done in that work environment, and those teachers can take that back to the classroom and teach relevant topics and skills to those students. The areas that we're touching on right now are business and finance, agriculture, healthcare, manufacturing, arts, media and entertainment, and transportation. So what's next? Well, we'll continue doing all the great things we're doing, and we'll look for other opportunities to engage further in the community. We will probably expand our Grow Your Business series. Not sure how yet, but we're still working on ways. We'll work closely with the downtown community on the business outreach in regards to new development that will be taking place in the downtown. We'll continue providing assistance and resources to the businesses that are here. We'll further work with the airport on their specific plan update on air service and promoting of the airport land as the next job center for employment. We'll continue to outreach to potential businesses as a first, second, or headquarters location, and we'll work on attraction of complementary supporting businesses, business vendors for our existing businesses in town. We'll continue to support regional efforts and coordination and marketing of our region. So, we've had quite a busy year. All in all, I think the business community is very strong, and we have something to be proud of in our community, and I thank you so much for the opportunity to share with you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Singh.
It's always exciting to come in and share with you guys what we're doing in the tourism program and the things that we've accomplished over the last year. And we base some of those off some key metrics, and we believe they provide a high-level view of our tourism hospitality activity overall. And while tourism's economic benefits to the community go way beyond just the lodging component, transient occupancy tax collections, along with average daily rate, occupancy rate, and room revenue metrics, provide a high-level indication of the strength of this economic sector. Yeah, it really doesn't want to go. Where am I pointing? There we go. Thank you. Thank you. Additionally, the Chamber's tourism team has identified metrics to measure the effectiveness of our marketing and sales efforts. Specifically, we are now tracking public relations, media stories, web and social media engagement, and large group and event RFPs. We are pleased to report that the TOT metrics, which we use to measure the return on investment of our programs, are seeing record numbers. In fiscal year '22, we saw more than 4.3 million, approximately 1 million more than forecasted for that year, the highest recorded collections to date. In fiscal year '23, we saw a slight slowdown of about 3/4 of a percent from that record high. This is an industry trend. It's affecting many of our neighboring destinations and is driven by the impact of elevated inflation, leading consumers and businesses to cut back on spending. We continue to watch the industry and put marketing dollars behind messaging that keeps us relevant and top of mind. When people do decide to begin traveling again, they'll think of Santa Maria Valley. Luckily, group and transient business travel still have room to grow and will likely offset any slowing leisure demand for the current fiscal year, and that's typically our midweek meeting planner and group business. Thank you. Supporting the local hospitality industry is an important component in our overall efforts. Our hospitality internship program was a pilot program launched this year. It is intended to create long-term solutions around the need for students to enter the industry in leadership capacities versus entry-level positions. As hotels continue to experience hiring challenges, the Visitor Bureau worked with Professor David Jones, Ph.D., a professor specializing in the development of innovative hospitality and tourism internships, and solutions based in curriculum and coaching. hospitality and tourism internships, and solutions based in curriculum and coaching. Professor Jones will share his decades-long experience through structured systems with oversight on both interns and current hotel and hospitality leadership, streamlining a workforce pipeline between Allen Hancock College and Cal Poly. The Public Art Initiative is a partnership with the City of Santa Maria and the Recreation and Parks Department and their nonprofit play. The Tourism Marketing District and the Visitors Bureau contributed a significant amount of funding to create, purchase, construct, and install additional public art throughout the city. We use these public art pieces to build on cultural tourism in the Santa Maria Valley. This is a five-year annual contribution, which will continue to build on existing city art initiatives while creating new opportunities. Current projects include building murals and utility boxes. The Santa Maria Valley Wine Trolley began as a collaboration between the City of Santa Maria Transit Department and the Visitors Bureau back in 2016 as a pilot program. We saw the program return in 2022 after a few years of non-operation due to COVID pandemic. Initially, the season was scheduled through October. However, due to a bump in ridership, the service was extended to include weekends through the Thanksgiving weekend, ending with 770 unique riders and a total ridership of over 2,500. With the increased popularity of the wine trolley at the end of the '22 season, the '23 season factored the previous season's extension into its plan and set the dates from May 13 through November 26. This year's trolley runs Saturdays, Sundays, and includes a new trolley stop at the new Santa Maria Public Market. From the start of the spring trolley season through June 30, the trolley had 152 unique riders and a total ridership of 463. This is a 32% unique rider and 15% total ridership increase year over year. This year, we were able to restart our monthly managers' meetings with local hospitality industry. Another way we support the local industry is by gathering a group of managers and staff monthly to share news, share ideas, network, and to provide opportunities to participate in familiarization tours and trainings. By taking hospitality partners to various attractions, wineries, breweries, and restaurants, it offers a firsthand experience that they can share with their guests. It gives them an educated perspective. Additionally, this year, we provided social media training where we brought in our agency, KPS3, to educate them on how to leverage our platforms and assets to their benefit. The Restaurant Month and Craft Cocktail Contest was a month-long celebration of Santa Maria Valley cuisine. Dine Out Santa Maria Valley was held from January 13 to February 12. It served up special menu items for just $20.23. This year's campaign saw increases in participating restaurants, and we hope to keep that momentum in 2024. Our Craft Cocktail Contest returned and ran concurrently with Dine Out Santa Maria Valley. We had eight participants in our Craft Cocktail Contest, of which two were new this year. Our 2023 winners for the Craft Cocktail Contest was Cool Hand Luke's Wild West Bourbon, and the judge's pick was Cuban Yuzu Mosguavo Mojito. So if you haven't gotten out and tried them, I recommend it. Attracting visitors to Santa Maria Valley is done through marketing efforts, targeting Bakersfield, Los Angeles, and San Francisco. This year, we launched the Less is More campaign, an evolution of the highly successful Spice campaign, our primary campaign running for our paid socials. The Spice Campaign has been out there since February of '21, and with a couple of refreshes garnered results unlike any we've ever seen on the platform relative to ad and website engagement. When the results started to plateau, we gave the campaign a little bit of a glow-up, introduced the Less is More campaign. The concept behind the campaign is that we know that Santa Maria Valley is less crowded, less expensive, less stuffy than some of our neighboring destinations. We wanted to tell our visitors that when they focus on less, less worry means less distraction. Spending less money means you are fitting more into your vacation. This concept focuses on all of the meaningful moments you can have when you add up your space, affordability, location, and attractions. May is barbecue month. In culinary world, Santa Maria-style barbecue is one of the best-kept barbecue secrets in America. We don't want to keep it a secret anymore. The campaign was driven by a strong creative concept and supported by public relations and paid social media tactics to broaden our reach and to ensure consistent and well-saturated messages throughout the month. We sent 25 barbecue month press kits to our key national LA and area food travel media. We had boosted posts that resulted in over 240,000 impressions, 3,600 clicks to the website, and nearly 49,000 engagements. Our posts led to nearly 3,000 website sessions. A dedicated email was sent to the top of the month, and the open rate was 58%, with a click-through rate of nearly 3%, the highest engagement metrics we've ever seen from a single email. The landing page attracted 2,518 unique page views with an average time of more than five minutes on a landing page. We had 57 newsletter sign-ups, 94 cookbook downloads, and 147 links. It was a very, very successful campaign. Our public relations approach continues to be primarily targeted at leisure travel, continuously reinforcing our unique experiences, Santa Maria-style barbecue, wine country, and authentic hospitality out of value. Throughout this fiscal year, we achieved 1.62 million in publicity value through 35 stories placed and nine familiarization tours. This year, we saw 24 new group leads come through our website and meetings and events, submittals form, our general partnership with California Society of Association Executives, general complimentary service inquiries, and special project grant submissions. Out of the 24 leads, we had 19 responses, a total 79% response rate. This is an area we'll be putting a little bit more effort into in this current fiscal year. We hosted nine fam tours for influencers and journalists with editorial spanning Travel and Leisure, Travel awaits, Roadrunner, Wander with Wander, Conde Nast, LA Family Travel, and more. We remain active on a variety of social media channels. Our Instagram reach was up 109% year over year, and we gained 7,600 new followers. Over 263,000 video views on TikTok and 651 new followers. We achieved 7,000 hotel referrals from social media advertising. Early in the second half of the year, we shifted our focus towards designing and development of a digital visitor guide. The idea behind the digital visitor guide was to be mobile-friendly and provide a dynamic landing page with visually interesting content. The Digital Visitor Guide launched on June 8, and by the end of the month, we saw 246 page views from 203 users. In the first half of the year, we updated the design of the lodging property details page on the website. We noticed that hotel referrals were dropping. After an analysis, we determined it was because of the placement of the Book Now button, especially on mobile. We've updated these pages as well as several other and optimized for mobile, and with some additional features, hotel referrals were up 30% year over year in just a few months following the changes. We continue to maintain and leverage our regional partnerships and industry events. This year, we attended Cal SAE, Cal Travel Summit, LA Travel and Adventure Show, and continued memberships with U.S. Travel, Visit California, Cal Travel, and the Central Coast Tourism Council. Go past that one. Thank you. So what's next? We're going to continue on our influencer strategy and execution campaigns. We will be doing another refresh of our Spice campaign. We are implementing digital mini-campaigns this year to be smaller, more fluid, but more targeted. We're going to do a refresh of our printed guides. We're working on an events and festival strategy. I'm still working on that citywide event and potentially a hot air balloon festival that I've been talking about for years. Our midweek campaign is currently running now, where we're going to give guests $100 if they book a two-night stay midweek. We're going to do a targeted meeting planner effort to build up more of that midweek business. We'll continue on some trade shows, and we're going to expand on our trade show efforts again this year. And we're working with the airport on potentially a marketing campaign on inbound air service. So we're looking forward to that partnership as well. So with that, thank you for your ongoing support of our tourism efforts. I'll turn it back over to Glenn.
Thank you.
So as you can see, we're busy. We're fortunate to have a very strong professional team working at the Chamber each day, serving the community. We're also fortunate to be led by a really strong volunteer board of directors who help set the policy and direction that we try to implement. We appreciate the engagement we have with members of the council and on a really regular basis with members of your staff. We think that it's a great working partnership and look forward to continuing it. With that, Mayor, I'd be happy to take any questions that you or members of the council may have.
Easy questions or hard questions?
Either one.
Okay. Any questions?
If they're hard, I'm going to bring them back up.
Okay. Any question? You know what? I would like to see that first chart, because I wasn't sure I understood what all of that meant.
On the tourism or the economic development?
Tourism. That one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, go ahead. You can explain it.
Yeah. So the top line of that bar just shows the TOT collections. Those are based on our fiscal year, so they're not going to match up exactly with your finance folks' track at January to December. We track it July to June.
Okay.
At the end of the day, they track out. So that shows you the last three years running on TOT. The larger chart at the bottom tracks occupancy rate at our hotels, so the number of room nights sold versus the number available. ADR, which stands for average daily rate, which is exactly what it sounds like, and then room revenue, which is the total revenue that the hotels report based on room sales. So it excludes catering or any of those other kinds of revenue sources. And then rooms sold, again, is another way of looking at the occupancy. And we've identified, looks like, seven or eight comparable markets within the region that we track our performance compared to the neighbors so that we can see whether things are different here or whether we're just tracking along with the region. So the top line there is Santa Maria. The second line is the South Coast. Slow within the city, slow county north would be a Tascadero and Paso, five cities, the San Ynez Valley, Salinas, and then the statewide averages for those metrics. And I think what you see there is we're kind of in the middle of the pack on most of those metrics.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
It's our pleasure.
Ms. Morris.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I need to come back to the resolution for Mr. Davis for a vote. We did not have a vote.
Yes, a motion and a vote.
A motion and a vote.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
There you go. Okay. Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not on the printed agenda this evening. If you are participating via Zoom in wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your hand in the Zoom portal. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form or a request acknowledgment in Zoom. We have three requests to speak and no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you. So I have three requests to speak at three minutes each. Mr. Hall, followed by Mr. Guzman, followed by Mr. Navarro. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening. How's that? Too much? Again, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall, and I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or Nesbit. I am speaking tonight, and I just added one item. This is the 59th time. I have come to ask the City of Santa Maria to join over 100 other California jurisdictions that through enactment of rent stabilization ordinances and programs have provided their mobile home residents with protection from excessive rent increases and in that way helped maintain affordable housing for their seniors and low-income citizens. The model lease does not do that. Again, I want to thank councilmembers Soto, Escobedo, and Cordero for passing the motion to examine the model lease agreement, looking for ways to improve it and to look at alternatives. That motion was passed June 6, 2022, but the work still remains undone. I am, however, pleased to acknowledge a stakeholder meeting is scheduled for November 14. Our Committee of Mobile Home Residents Representatives look forward to the meeting, and we welcome the participation of interim Assistant City Manager Wu. We are once again ready to discuss and obtain consensus on implementing specific changes to the existing model lease agreement and program. We have previously identified four issue areas which have guided discussions thus far. We request continuing with the same issue outlined as our agenda for the future meetings. We also suggest that the meeting records be maintained and a dashboard created to track the issues and possible solutions as the stakeholders work through them. Our goal is to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. With the help of Santa Maria, we feel this is achievable. Thank you.
Thank you. Luis Guzman?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, Madam Mayor and council members, thank you so much for your time and just for three minutes of my time to be able to speak. I want to just start off by sharing my story. I'm from Mexico, Mexico City, and originally, I was born there. I didn't come to the United States until I was five. So I have been undocumented for quite some time, and I recently got DACA. So thankfully, I was able to get DACA, but my journey hasn't been... It's been very difficult in terms of trying to get financial support from my parents because they haven't been able to really support me through college and because they themselves couldn't help financially. So it was very difficult, but I was able to make it work. I never saw myself going to college, and I was able to make it through even though my parents couldn't help me pay for college. What I ended up doing is I found out about entrepreneurship and starting your own business, and I found out that even though I was undocumented and people couldn't give me jobs, I could start my own business and give myself my own opportunities. And so I was very passionate. I ended up... Right now, I'm going through my fourth year at Cal Poly. I'm a computer science major, but I recently picked up a minor in entrepreneurship because I saw that's what really was my passion. And I love talking about my story because I really came from nothing, and I was able to make it this far. And so during COVID was my first year of college at Cal Poly, and unfortunately, I didn't realize how much college was. I didn't know it was like $15,000 for housing. And so I was very thankful that COVID happened in 2020 during my first year because it let me stay back home, and it let me be able to continue at Cal Poly. And during my first year, I ended up doing my first business, my first business at the age of 18. I was renting out mechanicables for weddings, for quinceañeras, for different events people would call me. So I ended up doing this business. I found out it really helped me pay my college, and it helped me be debt-free. And thankfully, I was very passionate about this, that I ended up helping my co-founder start another business, and they ended up doing it on photo booth rentals. And so being business owners, I saw how difficult it was to not only be able to execute our vision, but to be able to keep up with the high demand of the event planning industry. And through this, I ended up realizing there's such a big opportunity that I ended up realizing... I ended up pitching my idea to the Cal Poly, and I ended up getting $10,000. I ended up getting and spending 12 weeks starting my business. And this business that I want to do, I want to help families simplify the process of how they plan quinceañeras, how they plan weddings, how they plan all these different events that are taking six to a year to plan. And realistically, I'm also trying to help the businesses that are very low in tech, there's a language barrier, there's a technology barrier, and I really think the solution I'm creating is going to be great. So I'll definitely inform you. I just wanted to let you know what I'm working on, but I'll definitely reach out to you. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, congratulations to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Eddie Navarro?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Navarro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and staff, dignitaries, and guests. My name is Eddie Navarro. I was born and raised...
Well, congratulations to you. Thank you for being here. Eddie Navarro?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Navarro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, and staff, dignitaries, and guests. My name is Eddie Navarro. I was born and raised here in Santa Maria, raised a family. I'm, I don't know if this is the right place or procedure to do, ask, I mean, to state this, but I'm really a supporter of youth, of our youth activities. I came up, actually, my first, one of my first jobs was a recreation leader for the City of Santa Maria when we had rec leaders on each site. I was over at Oakley and at Atkinson and really, really left an impact on me. And, you know, Santa Maria being a big sports, lot of rich sports history, I've really been involved with the sports history and, you know, the youth activities. And especially, you know, any kind, anything having to do with youth activities, you know, be it theater or scouts or especially sports. Because of all those things, I mean, it just gives, you know, it promotes the family unity and it, it gives, you know, kids the chance to learn, you know, discipline and, and leadership and character, you know, through competitive, you know, active games. But what I really wanted to bring up was, you know how rumors start? Everybody knows how rumors start. It starts by somebody saying something sometimes, and then somebody picks it up and runs with it, and then pretty soon it just gets out of control. And so that usually is what happens. But so two rumors that, and I always get phone calls, you know, hey, well, you know what, they want to do this now, they want to take this away, and this and that. And I don't really get into that, but two rumors is, of course, you know, the, the, what we got going over on Bloss, I mean, Stoll Road and, and Depot, the sports complex, which is great, you know, that's what we need, but there's still no talk about something for, you know, at least practice field for baseball and basketball. And then, of course, they bring up, you know, Seamus again, you know, that they want to take Little League away and move it to the other side of town. And, you know, that has a lot of history, you know, having winning a few championships, plus Little League started there. But, and I just heard today that it's, they really don't want to do that, it's just, you know, they're going to work on it. Well, if they do work on it, I just hope that it's still going to be baseball, and they think about putting some kind of handicap access down to there. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Before we move on, Mr. Pasada, did you wish to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just to address Mr. Navarro's comments very quickly. Interim Rec and Parks Director Angela Osland is working on a plan along with Public Works for Seamus Park. We have some access issues there. So, you know, Eddie will be checking back with you and your group and letting you know kind of what the plan is. We have secured an architect to work on a design, and we're going to be moving forward with that over the season. There may be some need for this next Little League season to do some temporary relocation of the program, but for now, we're trying to see how best we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I had, I had heard that, too. Same thing that Mr. Navarro had heard. Moving on to the next item is the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read the description?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Can I have a motion?
On move.
A second? I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. And before we go on to the public hearing, I, it's brought to my attention to just briefly, briefly discuss 13A. And Mr. Cordero, would you like to say something to that?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, thank you. I think this is vitally important, and I would like to at least postpone a vote on this until we have all five of us here. Not because we can't legally do it with four of us. I just think it's such an important issue that, that the community and us as individuals deserve the, the input of all five council members. And I will say to the public that Maribel is not here, of course, but she's not out at the beach or in Hawaii or anything like that. She's intending a very important meeting involving the state, something has to do with the governor's office, and she just couldn't make the meeting tonight. So I would like to at least entertain that thought with you and my colleagues here, that we not do a vote, and I would even consider not doing the presentation, but I understand that there's a lot of people here that might want to speak, and we certainly don't want to upset the, the public on this. But I hope you'll consider not holding a vote until we have all five of us here because of the importance of this matter. I know that's unusual, a little unprecedented, but I hope you'll consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
I'm fine, I'm fine with postponing.
Okay.
And I'm also open, I'm still open to hearing the presentation, however.
Okay. And we do have people here to speak, so it is appropriate and, and to have them speak whether or not we have the presentation. I agree with you. I, I, if we have the presentation tonight, I don't even have the problem of repeating the presentation at, at the next time because there are going to be questions that we may want to ask. If we don't ask them tonight, we may want to ask them later. Do I need a vote on this?
Well, right now, it's on the agenda, and we would proceed with the presentation unless you, somebody wants to make a motion to continue it. We would need to give the public, though, an opportunity to speak to that continuance because it is on the agenda. But if the collective concurrence appears to be that it's going to be continued, speakers may wish to hold their comments as to the substance after they've seen the presentation and to make sure it's part of the record at the next meeting. So it's really your preference now, I think, whether you want to have the presentation or if you want to, if you're inclined, you think to continue it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you. I do agree that, you know, we already have people in the audience, so it would be appropriate for them to, to share, to share what they are coming.
Okay.
And yeah, I would agree with the postponement of the vote.
But the postponement of the vote, okay. So what is everyone's preference then for tonight? Hear the presentation, hear a public comment, or, we, we need to hear a public comment whether or not we hear the presentation and then continue, and then continue the item?
Madam Mayor, I will say that I'm ambivalent about it, but I don't see any point in having the presentation if we're going to have to have it again.
Okay.
However, I recognize some of us came here to listen to this, and this is not the normal way of doing business. So I, I get that the public is entitled to hear some of the comments tonight, but I, I strongly feel that, that each of us has something we bring to the dais, and we should have all five of us for something that's important.
Well, I think we've agreed on the vote. So what is the preference then for tonight? We will hear a public comment. Do we want to hear the presentation or not?
Perhaps I misunderstood, Jingle Council, but we need to have the presentation to have public comment, correct? No, we do not need to have the presentation tonight. You could continue it. The only thing is because it was on our agenda under the Brown Act, if there's a member of the public who wants to speak to it, we need to give them this opportunity. If they see, though, that it's looking like a continuance, I was trying to kind of suggest that if they want their comments in the record, you know, that at the next meeting, they, no point in doing their, just their comment on it tonight. If there is someone who maybe won't be able to make it next week or at the next meeting, though, you know, they could certainly speak as well tonight.
Okay. So what is your preference here?
I don't think we need the presentation. But like I said, I'm ambivalent to it.
Agreed.
Agreed? Okay, I agree.
I would, I would, I would go for the presentation, but definitely there's an agreement that three of you guys, I'll, I'll be fine with that.
Do we need a vote on that? Or not?
First, we'll give the public an opportunity to speak, and then you can make your motion to continue the item. If that's where you're still at.
Okay. So, okay, and the reason I mention this upfront, because this is the last item on the agenda, because people may not want to, I, I don't want someone to have to hang around for the other two presentations that we have. So that was, that was why I brought it to this point.
I think we're good to go to public comment if that's what you'd like to do.
Okay, public comment on item 13A then.
Yes, with, in mind, it looks like you're continuing it.
With, that we'll be continuing that, okay.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to add that we have received written comment from Coastal Credit Union in favor of alternative, alternative A, Judy Garrett, Grower Shipper Association, Linda Peterson, and Susan Shields in favor of alternative B, Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association, and Marion Regional Medical Center in favor of alternative C, and Dave Cross expressing that he feels the decision should not be focused on agriculture, rather totally focused on what is best for the City of Santa Maria and its future. These written comments were uploaded to the city's agenda portal, emailed to council, and a copy has been provided today. We also have nine comments.
Okay.
In, in council chambers and none on Zoom.
Okay, I have nine comments. How many on Zoom?
None.
None, okay. So any of, there may be people who put in public comments for tonight, they may want to reserve them for a future meeting, and you have the right to do that or not. So I guess I'll just go through these one at a time, and if you'll, if you'll say no, you want to reserve for a future meeting, we can do that. I, I'm seeing people nodding their head. Okay, Claire Weinman? It's the first? Next? Oh, Glenn Morris, I have a hard time reading your name every time. Matt Cameron?
I'd like to defer.
Okay. Lori Tamura?
Only question is, what's the continuance date?
We, we haven't decided that yet. Okay. Peggy Brierton? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. We're missing one here a minute. But I appreciate, I'm going to go ahead and take this opportunity because this is such a very important issue. But I'm for alternative B, the infill. I don't believe that we need to expand to have, to build houses. You're doing a fabulous job going up. I like, I like where you're going with the city so far. We do not need to use that valuable ag land for urban sprawl. And that's, you know, money that we don't, that we spend on planning, you have your cost to do that for annexation, that can be better used on things like the Fire Station One that you're looking for money to finish up. Let's spend the money and time and energy on the people and the residents that live here now, build the infill, and it was very, it was very well received by the community. If you put all of the three options, alternatives together, people really were for the infill, and we have the land, we can do it. So I'll be talking to you again about this, and I keep doing the same thing, but infill, please, thank you.
Thank you. Vince Martinez? Now or next time?
Well, that depends on when you're continuing. I, I thought that the, I thought our comments were supposed to be about continuing, and then you make your decision when you're continuing instead of making comments.
And you know, and, and my apologies, we probably should have set the date for a continuance that because you may not be available. So let me bring this back to the council. Do we need that on a vote or consensus?
Well, you can, maybe we could get a suggested date from the clerk, and then ultimately, when you vote to continue, if you have a date certain, you can include it. If you don't know when it's going to be, then you don't have to commit to anything.
Okay, I would strongly suggest December 5th because the next meeting will be the week of Thanksgiving. A lot of people may not be available. Mr. Pasada?
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have a consensus of the, which council members will be in attendance at the fifth meeting. We may have a council member absent. And I know that we'll have a council member absent the last meeting of the month. So my suggestion is that maybe you look at January, bringing the item back.
Oh. Okay. Okay. Okay, I will be here on the 5th. I will be here in the next meeting. I'll be on here on the 5th, okay. So. So can I, can I hear a motion for that? A motion that we continue, and we continue to the 5th?
I'll say.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, we really need to, if there's anyone else who would like to speak on that, we need to give them an opportunity to be heard. I don't know if you went through all the names.
No, I did not. I, I.
Because once we make the motion to continue it, it's, it's dealt.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Mr. Martinez?
Well, I'll just say my comments.
Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone, and I'll just make my comments, but I believe even if it is continued, I can still make additional comments at that time. I'm an attorney. I'm a citizen of the City of Santa Maria. I'm a resident here. And I've looked over what's happening here, and I do represent agricultural entities. I do represent businesses, and I represent one thing that I believe that should have been included in here. I know it says employees and businesses, but employers, the small-time employers. And what we look at in this instance is not the utopia of how do you make the right decision of how to develop business or even the, the city itself. But what I struggle with is that the concept that we always have to grow and the growing in, in a fashion in which takes up what this community is made of, and agricultural is what this is made of. I grew up in Orange County, and I saw what, when you take that acre and you take that 10 acres, it doesn't stop. And what happens is, is that then you have these ADUs, and the ADUs are not going to go in the wealthy neighborhoods, they're going to go into the lower-income neighborhoods. And that's when you have those cars in the front yards and the cars where you can't even find a place to park. The, I'm on the planning commission for the county, and in growing, the biggest obstacle I see is that of all the governmental entities, nobody is communicating on how you provide the water, the energy, and the logistics of growth. They're not communicating, and there's no communication. So when you make these plans to move forward, it's not just are the police going to be there? Can you even afford the police? Can you afford the fire departments? And right now, as I look at our city, the city is struggling to provide even for those elements of which we need with our present population. And my hope is, is that we do, if anything, is to look into the infill, since even within this report, it says the biggest population growth is going to be in the center of our city. So why wouldn't we concentrate on the center of our city, which is existing right now? It says in this instance that the utility of providing for that is problematic, but that utility, in my mind, is having the money to buy the land. If you're going to annex, you're going to buy, and you're going to buy some very, very expensive land. And, and when you take ag land and you develop it, it's not just putting a school there, it's not just putting houses there. You have food safety situations, you have buffer zones, you have a lot of things that go into place, even if you put a park. A park has an impact upon all the surrounding agriculture areas. Those buffer zones can, can take effect. There was talk one time of putting a pet park on Blosser, and that would have had a devastating effect upon the land of which the employees, the employers, and the businesses are involved in. And I thank you for your time, and I look forward to addressing it again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If you have a second, I did go back and look at my. I did go back and look at my emails, and it does look like the December 5th meeting, all of you will be here. So there'll be five members for the December 5th meeting.
There will be five members?
Yes.
Thank you. Gary Wojcik?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Gary Wojcik, and I'll keep this brief. I'm Director of Facilities and Logistics with Santa Maria Joint Union High School District. And I'm here tonight to represent the district regarding the preferred land use alternative, modified Alternative C, the hybrid. I just wanted to take a moment here and not go through this whole little write-up, but I just want, as we move forward with this, we'd like you to please keep in mind the students, the families, and the community that are involved with our schools. And as the district, or rather, as the city grows, and the area grows, we do need to keep in mind areas for schools to be cited within our boundaries here. It's really important where we place them and how we place them. So as you make your decision moving forward on this, we would like to stress that you keep that in mind when it comes time for the vote. And I will return when we discuss this again later on in December. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ken Huff?
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm Ken Huff with Santa Barbara County Action Network, and I would support the continuation. I think you need to have all five of you here, so I'm glad you've got a date when you can be. I hope, I will say that we submitted a letter, it's got our letterhead and eight others, and it's addressed to the Planning Commission, but it was sent to you as well. And it has an appendix that references your alternatives analysis in a lot of detail. And we feel that if you look at the analytics, it doesn't point to infill, I mean, it points to infill, it doesn't point to the preferred alternative. And so I hope you will look at that carefully in the meantime, and I'll reserve my more detailed comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Diaz Correa?
Hello, thank you for giving us time today. I think I'll read my statement, but I approve of you guys delaying this. I think it'll be great for community members to have more time, and for you to look at the report. And so, one, I just want to thank you. My name is Alan Diaz, I'm a lifelong Santa Maria native, and I work for the Community Environmental Council as a community organizer. CEC wholeheartedly supports the general plan update as it works to align with the community's needs, particularly in terms of affordable housing, low-income housing, and the preservation of health and safety standards in our current housing stock. Santa Maria residents have consistently voiced their demand for more housing in terms of space, affordability, and accessibility to city resources. Numerous residents have expressed the need for schools where they currently live, as well as basic maintenance of their homes and apartments. Regarding transportation, the city's analysis highlights that building new development and the necessary roads across the 101 won't reduce the need for vehicles. It will increase the distance residents have to travel, especially those that will live outside the current city boundaries. It's important to recognize that for many residents living in Santa Maria today, housing that would be developed on annexed land would be financially out of reach. In conclusion, I would like to emphasize that the core issue is the impact of annexation on future growth, and the allocation of resources within the city of Santa Maria. The decision that will, that you guys have before you is going to dictate the trajectory of the city's development for decades, and it has far-reaching implications for our residents, and our families, and the environment. And so, again, thank you for taking the time, I hope you look at the analysis, and please come with questions. Will come in December, and hopefully we'll have more community members advocating for their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then this will be continued till...
I believe there may be people on Zoom as well, Your Honor.
I don't have any hands up on Zoom.
Oh, wonderful, yeah, then the December 6th date would be available?
December 5th.
Pardon me, December 5th, if you'd like to make a motion to continue it until that date.
Can I have a motion? Okay, a motion and a second and a third, that we will continue this till December 3. A will be continued until December 5th. Thank you.
Do, do we need to call a vote?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay, Adam Clark, pro-call.
Okay. Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay, next we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, can you read the title?
Thank, thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, the City Council will consider approving a general plan land use amendment and zone change, GPZ 2021-0003, from MDR 12, medium-density residential land use designation, and R2, medium-density residential zoning, to community facilities land use designation, and public facilities and institutional zoning dedication, designation, and a planned development permit, PD 2022-0014, for the Santa Maria Cemetery District to construct a 2,550-square-foot prefabricated storage building with attached 544-square-foot office and break room with a 15,900-square-foot gravel-based storage area and associated site improvements on a .87-acre site.
Staff report is to be made by interim Assistant City Manager, Mr. Wu.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a, an application for general plan amendment for Santa Maria Cemetery District Maintenance Building. And we're going to wait till the presentation's pulled up here. So this is the project location. The project site is on .87 acres, and it's highlighted in the yellow boundaries. It's landlocked, and it's property to the west of the newer side of the cemetery district called the South Lawn, and it's south of Battles. The project is south of East New Love. So it's, it's landlocked, and the applicant is proposing that this be a part of the cemetery, but it needs the right general plan land use and zoning, and there's also a PD permit attached to this request. Here is the cemetery expansion master plan. So you can see College Drive and Battles, and Phase 1, Phase 2, that is in existence. The, you can see the dotted lines, that, that square area that's to the west, and this is the area of work that's under consideration for today. There's an existing conditional use permit that's been approved since 2004. Again, this is a general plan amendment and rezone. It's currently designated a medium-density residential, and the proposal is to change it to community facilities. The corresponding zoning is medium-density residential R2, and the request is for public facilities, PF. The planned development permit is for the construction of a maintenance building and offices for the cemetery district. There was a, there was secret review that was performed for this request, and there will be a recommendation to adopt the mitigated negative declaration. Again, this is the, the land use map. You see the orange that's existing, that, that reflects the residential use. No problem. And the request is, is for this property to, to be designated community facilities. And again, the corresponding zoning here. These are some site photos of the project site. This is looking south towards the project site. You can see the residences to the right on the, on the upper photo, and you can see the gate. This is looking south. And this is that vacant area that's landlocked, it's currently unimproved. This is a more detailed site plan. You can see on this property, a proposed maintenance building that's closer to the residence. You can see that rectangular, that the rectangular spot that, that shows maintenance in the office. It is 20 feet away from residences, so there is, there is a good separation. And also, there will be some landscaping that will help with that separation between the existing residential homes and the maintenance building. There is a parking lot for, for the site, and there's some, some base area for, for some outdoor, outdoor storage. Here we go. This is a, this is a detailed floor plan. There will be some, some bays and some doors for access into the storage building. And that's, this is what the building looks like, these are the building elevations. These are the proposed colors. And these are the landscape plans. Again, you can see the landscaping that's, that surrounds the property, and also in between the use and the existing residences. There was a secret review that was performed, and there were some impacts that were identified, but there are mitigation measures that will reduce the impacts to less than significant. I'm not going to read the entire recommendation, but it is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, also to adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use map from a residential, medium-density residential to community facilities, and also to introduce a first reading, continue to a future meeting, the ordinance amending the zoning from MDR 12 to PD, no, to CF. And then finally, a resolution approving the planned development permit for the cemetery district expansion. This concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions, or Mr. Wu? Yes, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we go back into the presentation in regards to the, the maintenance building? Was that submitted by the cemetery district?
Yes.
So that building will be just one, one-story building? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's basically a just storage unit for all the maintenance? Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that was, that's, that's it, thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? So is their, is their main office going to be moved over there? To that office, or just another office?
No, there's, I believe, Madam Mayor, the, the office is, it's really, there's kind of a break area for the maintenance employees.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I'd like to open up, this open up a public hearing, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
We do not, Madam Mayor, and we have no hands up in Zoom.
Okay. I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Madam Mayor, if there's no discussion, I would like to move this item.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the recommendations. Are you going to accept all four recommendations? Do we have to enumerate those, one by one?
I'm afraid we do need to do them in order. The environmental one, number one, needs to happen by itself, and then unfortunately, we do need to move through each one separately.
Really? Okay.
Well, I...
Go ahead, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's going to be alone. So I, I move that we adopt the resolution to adopt the mitigated negative declaration for the general plan land use map amendment, sound change, and planned development permit for the Santa Maria Cemetery District expansion located in the 600 block of East New Love Drive.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Also would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution amending the general plan land use policy map for approximately 87 acres from MDR 12, medium-density residential, to CF, community facility, for the Santa Maria Cemetery District expansion located at the, at the 600 block of East New Love Drive.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Now I would like to make, move, motion to introduce the, for first reading and continue to a future meeting, an ordinance amendment, the general plan land use policy map for approximately 0.87 acres from DM, MDR 12, located at the 600 block of East New Love Drive, from P, PDR slash, R2, Plan, Planning Development slash Medium Density Residential to CF, Community, Community 2, it's Community Facility? It would be, yeah, to PD, PF, Planned Development Public Facilities, for the Santa Maria Cemetery District expansion located at the 600 block of East New Love Drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And I would like to make another motion to adopt the resolution approving the planned development permit, PD 20220014, for the Santa Maria Cemetery, Cemetery District expansion located at the 600 block of East New Love Drive.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city will consider approving agreements with Forefront Power for the construction of solar photovoltaic systems to eight city real property sites. The city of Santa Maria was able to secure forefront power through school project for utility rate reduction, a joint power authority which offers the renewable energy aggregated procurement program for which the city is an eligible entity.
Staff report is to be made by Director of Public Works, Mr. Folgony.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for your time this evening. We'll go through a brief presentation on how we came to this point. To get to the point here, the city of Santa Maria has worked with, well, we, we went out and asked for proposals, and we received one from NG and one from Forefront Power. And Sam Angulo here took each of the entities around to all the city facilities that we felt were going to be able to benefit from this, and gave them the, the exact same opportunity to provide us with their best and final offer on this. So, to summarize, 4.4 megawatts across eight facilities. This is a power purchase agreement, meaning we will be purchasing the power from Forefront Power as opposed to 3CE or PG&E. There's no out-of-pocket cost for us, all the equipment will be owned and maintained by Forefront Power. Our rate will not change for 20 years, it'll be a 0% escalation. And we expect that about $12.6 million will be saved over 20 years. Those assumptions are made with a 2.7% increase in, so our current rates, if we stay with PG&E, we came up with a savings number by saying that we think that PG&E and 3CE rates will go up by 2.7%. And so if our rates stay level, then we'll save $12.6 million. In the next slide, I just wanted to point out that these are actual rate increases from PG&E, and you can see our estimates are quite conservative. Here's a quick summary of the overall pricing and savings from each site that we plan to work on. So we have the City Wells, the Civic Center, wastewater treatment plant, city police department, the transit department, the aquatic center, James Hagerman Sports Complex, and Manami Park. And so each project rests on its own, they're individual projects in themselves, and so each one of them has a different rate, because there's different construction costs associated with each project. So that's why you have the different rates. And that's per nem... And that's per NEM 2. So a brief overview of the kind of how we got here. In summer 2021, the staff engaged with Spur and Forefront Power and along with NG to get proposals for the evaluation of city facilities. Sam, along with other staff, went around site visits. Spring of 2023, we selected Spur and Forefront to continue forward. And we qualify under, and this is very important, under NEM 2 savings, so net energy metering 2. We qualify for that because we got our applications in early this spring. So it's very important in terms of making this financially viable. So the settled rates. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you please elaborate a little bit of why it was important to submit it that early?
Yep, so the California Public Utility Commission recently enacted what we call net energy metering 3, and that was effective sometime around April, May of this year. And so our our, what that does is allow you to, the NEM 2 allows you to sell power back to the utility at a retail rate. So the retail rate is what we pay. It's much, much higher. NEM 3 changed it to where you sell the rate back at wholesale rate, and then you buy it back at a retail rate. And so the the economics of it, it's roughly three to four times the price. So, thank you. Sure. So the settled rates, we decided to price it per, I decided that per price per kilowatt was the most important thing since we will be buying energy per kilowatt. And so Spur and Forefront's per kilowatt proposed price was .416 per kilowatt. NG was .18 per kilowatt. Our settled blended rate, due to some adjustments and adding some other projects after we selected Spur and Forefront, is 15 cents a kilowatt. This was NG's proposal. They provided three different proposals, and the the number on the right-hand side out in space is the the three point, I think it's 3.396 there. That number is my estimation of the savings that NG will provide over 20 years. NEM 2 will only be effective for 20 years. And so anything beyond 20 years, we cannot guarantee what the savings will be. That's why this contract is 20 years. Another 20-year PPA that they proposed, just another option that NG had proposed. And they also proposed a 28-year PPA, but I I wasn't confident in providing the savings because those last eight years, I don't know what the deal from the CPUC would be, so we can only calculate this on 20 years. And then Forefront's winning proposal that they provided us. So a quick background on Spur, and you hear Spur REAP and you hear Forefront. So Spur REAP is the, let's call it the Joint Powers Authority that procured Forefront Power. And so they, Spur is is the one that is the entity that did the bidding and received all of these different proposals statewide. And so and Forefront is the power provider that was successful in that. These are all the different entities that they've done business with throughout the state of California. And they're backed by Mitsui Company, which is, we want to make sure that Forefront is going to be around when we need to, you know, make repairs to the solar project, which they're responsible for. And I called personally each one of these entities and asked for references for Forefront Power, and all of them had very, very good things to say about Forefront Power and Spur REAP. I called people that they didn't know I was going to call, and I I received positive feedback, feedback both from the construction side and from the maintenance side. So here, we'll go into some quick overviews of the different solar mounts that we plan to do. This is at the wastewater treatment plant, or this is the City Wells location with the airport. We still need to negotiate the lease with the airport. We did make some assumptions in the, some conservative assumptions for the lease rates in order to cite this location. Santa Maria City Hall, so we have to run a conduit from across the street, from across Broadway, to our Cook Street meter in order to serve the location. So you'd be contemplating some covered parking. We still need to, there's still a lot of work to do. This is really the first step. Sure.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You're saying that those blue, blue?
Yep.
Those are planning to be covered?
Covered parking with lighting below.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Wastewater Treatment Plant, wastewater treatment plant, as you know, still needs to be designed. We're not sure if this will be the final location, but we're hopeful that we put it at the end of the line so that if we do have to change the location, hopefully costs will decrease as we do because we'll have less trenching. Santa Maria Police Department. And Santa Maria Transit Yard. James, or Paul Nelson Aquatic Center. James Hagerman Sports Complex. And Manami Park. Just a quick summary of the environmental impacts of the decision. This is something that Forefront put together to kind of sum up how much carbon dioxide would be saved. Concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Any questions of Mr. Folgony? Yes.
What are the predictable obligations we have at the end of the 20 years? Do we just, we renegotiate or do we know?
Yeah, the the system is designed to have a 20-year lifespan, so the panels and Forefront will need to remove all of that, and so we won't have any obligation to demolish anything or or anything of that nature. That's all on them. That's one of the benefits of the power purchase agreement. We don't know what the CPUC's deal will be for power in 20 years, let alone three years. So it's it's sort of ever-changing. All we can really hone our sights in is we know that this is the deal for 20 years and that we have minimal risk associated with removal of the project once we get to that 20-year mark.
We'll let you know in 20 years, Mr. Cordero.
I don't think so. I I just think that, you know.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I I just think that we're going, we're all going there to alternative energy. And I think these kinds of things are going to ultimately be very, very smart decisions that we make to get involved with with these kinds of endeavors in the in the foreseeable future. So I just, you know, we have to, you know, that's the way America is going and it's the way the world is going. So I I appreciate everyone's effort to get involved in in this a little bit more, so it it'll be paid back in spades, I believe. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
We have received written correspondence from the Chamber of Commerce, the Coalition of Labor Agriculture and Business, Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association, and Ecol Alliance, all in favor of approval of this item. These written comments were uploaded to the city's agenda portal, emailed to council, and a copy has been provided. We do not have any requests to speak and no hands up in Zoom.
Thank you. Okay. I'll close the public, yes, Mr. Escobedo.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, just, I would like to, maybe even Sam can, I don't know, I think that if you would like to talk a little bit there, representative from them. There's a question I have in regards in the presentation about, it was prioritizing local local labor, so, yeah, just.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sam Zanzinger. I'm here with Forefront Power. I believe your question was about local labor. So we intend to use local union labor associated for these projects during the construction phase, yes, sourcing again from from the region.
And I thank you. And I and I do concur with Councilmember Cordero in regards that it seems that the war is moving into that direction. So I also would like to recognize that, and it was mentioned during the presentation about jumping in first and and doing the work early so we can take advantage of these kind of programs. So so good job to the to the city staff and looking forward to see how it's, well, if it's voted for, looking forward to working together for, well, 20 years. We're over there.
Thank you. Ms. Soto, did you, did you wish to make any comments? No?
No.
Okay.
I was just commenting.
Oh, okay.
Typically hire 50% local workforce in the report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I hate to ask you this. Did I open it up for a public hearing?
You did.
Okay.
We just need to close.
I, okay, and I was just going to close. Okay, fine. So I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for any further discussion and/or a motion. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolutions accepting the recommendation of staff and into power purchase agreements and related contract documents with Forefront Power for facilities at the city's real property sites. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay. Next item will be a report by the interim city manager, Mr. Posada. Thank you, Mr. Folgony.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just a little bit of an update on upcoming agenda items for your meeting of November the 21st. We will have a closed session. We have a business of the month presentation by the chamber. We also have a presentation by SB CAG. The award of the Stole Black Road Waterline Extension Project. And a contract amendment for the autonomous shuttle pass-through purchase coming up. And a TEFRA hearing for the Visca Yena Apartments. And interim finance director, Ms. Bradford will be presenting the first quarter financial report.
Thank you. So next item is oral reports of council members. And Ms. Soto, would you like to start?
Yes. I actually have no reportable items, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, on October 28th, I attended the Santa Barbara County Betterance Stand Down. And on the 2nd, November 2nd, I had a meeting with Jen Perkins regarding Santa Maria Council worship. So interview. And, yeah, and that's, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the 24th, I attended the Black and White Ball at the Elks, and I'll point out that 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 particular function supports the Boys and Girls Club. It's been going on by the Mexican Ladies Social Club for many years, 40 years or something like that. On the 24th, we had a closed session regarding the issues with replacing Mr. Jason's position. On the 24th, I also attended the Real Cost of Living that was put on by the chamber and the United Way, and that was a real eye-opener. It was at Ellen Hancock, and it was really interesting to see how the federal government makes its assessments and how, what the real assessments really are. And it was quite enlightening. On the 25th, I was at the State of the City address that was emceed by you, Madam Mayor, and that was also a very interesting bit of information that was out at the out at the airport, the hotel at the airport. On the 25th, I was at the ribbon cutting for Adient Aerospace, Adient Aerospace. That was sponsored by the chamber. That was very fascinating. It's also interesting to hear them talk. It's a worldwide organization, and not only are they coming here to to manufacture interiors for airplanes, they're actually bringing some of their suppliers with them that will open up, also open up some companies here in town. And I have a lunch with the chamber on Thursday, and we're going to discuss this particular issue a little bit more and how we can help them. But it was also, it was, it was very interesting information. On the 26th, I was at the kids Halloween party at the Elks, which was a blast. I'm glad that the fire department was not there. There, there was kids all over the place. It was a great, great function. On the 26th, I was at the CCWA meeting in Buellton. And we're settling some legal issues there. And on the 26th, I also attended a meeting on Zoom for affordable housing. And I also sat with a goal-setting comments with Jan Perkins. And I have one more comment, Madam Mayor. And I'll, I'll comment on this at the radio show tomorrow morning. But on the November the 14th, this Tuesday next week, our newly elected Assemblyman is having an open house at 1111 South Broadway, Suite 101, and he invites the public to come. I will try to make it there. And on the 2nd, oh, I do have a couple more things. On the 2nd, I was at the Celebrate Philanthropy at the golf course. And on the 7th, I attended a Teacher of the Year event down in Santa Barbara, and the city or the North County had several recognitions for teachers that were honored for Teachers of the Year. They were from the Santa Maria High School and some people from the Orchid School District. And one particular young lady from the Santa Maria Benita School District. It was a very well-attended meal and a good program. It was hosted by Susan Salcedo from the county superintendent. And that's it for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I do not have, I do not have my list with me tonight, but I would like to comment that no, Saturday, November 11th, 11 o'clock at the Able Mall, the Nado Center, will be celebrating Veterans Day. And so we'd certainly like to have a lot of people come out and help celebrate with our veterans. So ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's meeting. Good night.